Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special call work session September 27th, 2022 of the Camden County Board of Education. Start with our information updates, our new high school project with representatives of MBCon and Mosley Architects.
Maggie, I've turned the air conditioning up, so it should go off soon, but if you'll just speak up until that time.
Is this on? It's not on. It is on? Okay. Good evening, board. Thank you for having us come speak to you a little bit about what we've been working on over the last month. I have with me Bill Ramsey, who's the Director of Preconstruction for MBCon. You all met him before. And as you know, Ashley Dennis, the architect with Mosley. And then I'm Maggie Dipmar with MBCon as well. So the first thing that we're going to talk a little bit about is the site design. So this is what was previously presented in our, this was what was most recently presented in our last presentation. And Ashley, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Sure. Just as a brief reminder of kind of how the site design was laid out, the building was facing out on the road due to some of the site constraints that we had. This is awesome. This is interpretive, buddy. Hey! We are! Hey, I mean, that doesn't happen often. That's, that's really awesome. So the student drop-off actually occurs in the back just due to some of the site constraints that we had with the wetlands in the rear of the site. So instead of having it near the front of the school, we have the drop-off in the back along with the student parking lot. So those are the larger parking lots. Our bus drive actually comes in kind of on the right or the lower portion of the site and drops off adjacent to the early college and that kind of entrance near the center of that like spine corridor that goes back. Our loading dock is also over there, so all of our heavy vehicle traffic occurs kind of on this lower portion of the site. And then we have all of our playfields to the rear. Our student traffic, pedestrian traffic going from the school building over to the playfields goes along the sidewalk and does end up having to cross one drive to get back there, so.
Okay, so this is what was previously presented. Now, why we're here tonight is that there've been a lot of questions about potentially expanding on additional property, what those potential options, what that could offer in options for you all. As you've now received additional grant funds, you have some extra money. What, what could that look like? What could you spend that money on? So as we walk through the site and then building, please ask questions. We want this to be open discussion. So we'll have questions at the end, but we're not waiting for questions at the end.
Wow.
Oh, great.
Just the way that site layout, is that oriented on the current 343 site?
Yes.
Okay, that's with no expansion? That's what's there? Okay, just trying to get a...
This is without any knowledge that we would expand.
Gotcha.
That was, this was the original track that we were on and the original path that we're going down.
Just wanted to make sure, tracking from there.
Basically, this is where we were, and now what do we add? What do we change? Okay, so with the site changes, if additional property is purchased and can be added, some improvements that we would like for you all to look at is improving the access, spreading apart the two entrances, and improving circulation around the site. This would afford being able to separate some of the drop-off traffic, which would be safer for the students. Additionally, if additional property was purchased, we would be able to select a more optimal position for the building. We would be able to add back the multipurpose field because of the drainage plan for the smaller portion of the site. We had to eliminate that just due to size constraints, so we would look to add that back potentially. And then with relocating the building to an optimal position, this would afford you more options for future growth.
And I'll just add on to what Maggie said, and if you'll go back to the last slide to just elaborate on this, there's nothing wrong with this plan. I know that it's been said, well, you know, this plan isn't great. This plan is exactly what it needs to be on the site that it's on. With the opportunities that additional acreage would provide, it does allow us to possibly shift the building away from the road. Ideally, you would like your students to probably come in at the administrative suite. That's just kind of typical in a high school design. We were not really given that opportunity with this, the way the site allowed us to lay out, so that moving the building away from the road gives us more acreage at the front to possibly do some of that queuing in that drive at the front. Ball fields, again, just allows us to kind of move them to give us some more wiggle room around the building. The biggest thing is the fact that we kind of had to shove all the parking right up against the building, so a lot of your additions and future growth really were determined by the site elements versus the building determining where the site elements went, just because of the amount of acreage we had. So if we have additional acreage, the building kind of come first, the site kind of follows versus the vice versa that we kind of had.
Okay. All right, and then for us to be able to move forward and really explore how all of this would lay out, where Ashley could show you a revised site layout, we would really need due diligence completed on that property. Are there any questions about the site before we move into building? Okay.
So I'll kind of run through this. Again, we'll do a similar exercise. This is the floor plan you've seen multiple times that I've kind of run through with you in relation to the design as it is now. I've said before, and I'll say again, this is a really good design. We've met with everyone. It meets a lot of the needs of the district with the opportunities of additional funding and additional acreage. We could possibly make some changes to this that could meet more of the needs of the school and possibly allow for more program space. So again, pink is that administrative area. The number two there is the main admin for the high school, so that's that front of the school that we talked about, having some opportunity to possibly have students enter there from parent drop-off. Anything in yellow is our classroom, so we've got our main academic classroom wing kind of up to the north above that administrative area. We've got the early college to the south. We've got kind of the bridge area that we called it, all of the spaces that were utilized by both high schools. So we've got our media center, our guidance, our clinic, and some of our resource rooms within that center core. Then we have our connector corridor that goes to the kind of back end of the school where we've got our athletics, cafeteria, commons. And then the dark pink, purple, and light purple are our arts and our CTE spaces, and then the sciences are within that more STEM-focused wing. So what opportunities do we have to add programs? So some of these were spaces that we discussed early on and chose not to move forward with just based on budget, and then some of them are other opportunities that we have that as we were kind of brainstorming on things that we could adjust. So we've got an auxiliary gym here. You've seen this kind of location. I still think it's the right location for the auxiliary gym. Doesn't mean it has to go there. We would still want to have meetings. We would still want to discuss this with all of the groups that we've met with along the way for the school design, but that is one opportunity or option. The other one would be additional classrooms. For this exercise of presenting tonight, we said six additional classrooms. I think we have some options of where these go. So with the way the site was designed originally, we were going for that number one spot that was far, far north. It really kind of elongates that classroom wing, and so supervision isn't bad, but it does require you to kind of be in two places to supervise those two kind of pods. So with this option, the second option, we've kind of thought there might be some opportunity now if we can move away from the road and have more real estate in the front of the school to expand that classroom pod kind of out towards the front and kind of make it all connected. So there, everything, all of the, those academic classrooms would kind of be in the same pod and have better circulation and supervision in that area. Adding six additional classrooms would increase your student capacity by 132. Any questions about those two? Yes?
132, is that just the core, or is that actual? We go from 600 and 800 to 732 and 932?
No, the core does not increase with this. This is just the student.
That's actual student count classroom, okay.
Yeah. And that's based off of DPI's 22 students per classroom. So, you know, you're putting 30 students in there, sure, does it technically increase more, but that's usually how we do that exercise.
Are you saying, are you saying that both of those are options, like choose one of those layouts? Or could you say, just say we went with the number two there and had number one as an alternative years down the road for alternative?
So I would say that that would be, at least for what you just described, number two would be your choice in that example, and number one could be future, future growth. If you went with number one, we would have to look at how the next future growth would happen, but again, that's more of those meetings and things like that. But I, having additional acreage allows you to have that opportunity too, so. All right, so auditorium, again, something that kind of got set aside as not a program piece that was going to be built originally, but is another option of ways for the additional funds to be spent. Here, I'm just showing two options of where it could be located. You know, I think that adjacency to the bandroom is important, adjacency to probably your cafeteria commons area is important because then we can double duty on lobby space. But we kind of put some square footages up there of different seat counts for the auditorium. So again, there, and you're wondering why it doesn't go up in the same chunk, right? Because Maggie wondered that too, and she called me and said, you don't know what you're doing.
That if you crossed the 400 threshold, things got exponentially more expensive because of...
So your stage grows when you go beyond 400. So at 240 and 400, your stage is so big because basically for, for the easiest way to explain it, kind of the width remains the same. When you get to the 600, you get wider because you don't want to just continue to get longer in your, you know, the way the build, the space is designed. And so your stage actually grows along with the seat area room growing, right?
One thing too, to keep in mind is that if you are going to try to bring in like community programming and they're having to purchase rights to be able to do a performance, those costs also increase exponentially past a certain point. I know we've talked about that before, but just keep that in mind. And then to Ashley's point about increasing the stage, with increasing the stage, you're also increasing all of your rigging, your stage floor. So it's, not only is it exponential in square footage, it's also exponential in price.
Our next option that we wanted to present was the opportunity to take another look at the CTE labs. We were at a point where the floor plan couldn't grow, and we needed to fit things in where it could go. And so relooking at some of the CTE labs, I think we have some opportunity to make those larger, get closer to some sizes that probably existing spaces are, or closer to not having to double duty some spaces. And so that additional square footage you see there is in relation to enlarging some of those labs and an increased classroom. It does say up here, program remains the same. That doesn't mean that we're not adding that additional classroom or increasing those spaces. It just means that we're not adding additional classes that we're not thinking of. That would be something we would look to you and to staff and say, okay, if you want to add another curriculum space, then obviously that square footage number continues to increase. All right. Good?
Are there any questions on kind of the concepts that were presented? I know you want to know cost.
Do, but I know a few of us have been asked this out in the community. It residential-wise, always cheaper to go up than out. Is that the same in this step, say, just for the classroom area? Not the entire building, but is it cheaper to add a floor to get additional wings without increasing the footprint in this type of construction? Fair enough. Got to ask, several people, you know, people are asking, I don't have the answer on the commercial side, so.
Okay, are there any scopes that we didn't cover that you all were thinking of that we need to regroup and go back and look at as of now? Or do we kind of hit all the major ones?
At this point, I did all the major ones with some of this, so.
Okay.
I mean, I think once we get through the due diligence period and once we start to see the layout, I mean, you know, to figure out if the plan right now works on the new site or how that layout will be different, I mean, that's a question that I'll, I'll have when we get there, but I don't think you could probably really answer that very well now, right?
All right, so for budgets, we've presented budgets for you in the past for potential alternates. You'll see that some of these, or all of them, have been refined. So we've recently done some bidding for new schools. We're utilizing that information. Ashley has gone back. We've tweaked some square footages. So you'll see, some things have gone down slightly from what we've originally presented, but some things have gone slightly up. They're not major changes, but I just wanted to, if you do try to go back and compare, you will see that some of the numbers have been refined. So I put them all on one page because I know that you wanted to look at all the options and compare. So the auxiliary gymnasium, that's one that we've presented before. This number has gone down from the previous time we've presented. So we're at around $3.7 million if you wanted to add back the auxiliary gymnasium. For the classroom addition, and again, this is six classrooms, it's 8,300 square feet. It went slightly up. It's about 4.3 million, not much of a difference, but we wanted to reflect that that's what we're seeing in the market right now. With the auditorium, again, this is what we're talking about, kind of those exponential prices, the bigger you get, the more exponential. So for a 240-seat, you're looking at a $5 million price tag. For a 400-seat, you're increasing a little less than 3,000 square feet, so you're at 5.9, which I think is a good bargain for getting that many more seats. When you go to a 600-seat, it does increase significantly to 8.4 million. And again, this is just due to the additional stage size, equipment needed, seating, that kind of thing. For the CTE revision, again, as Ashley said, this is, this is all conceptual, so we've kind of put together some square footage of where we think we might would land based off of DPI standards of those classroom sizes. So it's a little over 5,600 square feet, which is about 3 million. And then I'm leaving this one on there. What, this is one we presented in the past. When you get additional acreage, as you spread things out, you're going to have more site that you have to develop. That's just part of it. So we have $1.5 million to hold there for that additional site development. Again, until we have due diligence, know how everything's going to lay out, we can't really put together a detailed budget for that. One thing to point out about this budget is I know we want to potentially add back the multipurpose field. If you keep it simple and it's not a stadium with lighting, if it's just a graded field with seating that you can actually go out and spray paint and practice on, we think that's covered in this number. But if you want to actually go back in and look at doing a kind of a stadium-style practice field or a soccer field, that's something that we would need to revisit. Any questions about the cost?
What's the core cost, I guess?
The core cost?
Or the building itself?
Where we were originally, so it's a little confusing because we kind of adjusted to try to meet a budget. So what was previously presented was a $73 million budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have $50 million in grant and $33 million for USDA, so that's not 73 million. So what we previously presented was 73, but that's 83 million. So that's $10 million that we haven't looked at. Previously, we also put all of the additional money in contingency. I don't know if y'all remember that, but it was about $10.7 million that was in a contingency fund for, you need to hold a contingency, but you'll have some extra funds to pick up some additional scope. If you hold a 5% contingency based off the previous budget, you'll have $7.5 million left over plus the $10 million if you're at an $83 million budget. So you're looking at about $17 million that you haven't figured out what you're going to do with yet. Off of 83.
83 minus 17, so you're saying just, just the school like it was with none of this is 66 million now?
That was the previous budget that we submitted.
And the fields.
And the site, and that, yeah.
So we're starting at 66, and then what we add back adds to the 66.
Correct.
Obviously, the number one thing we have to add first in that list is classroom. So that puts us at 70.
And, and keep in mind the additional site development. You, you'll need to keep that one in mind, too.
Yeah.
Right?
We should be, hopefully we're saving that off of, off the crap land and hopefully it's a better one.
Um, but that's with a 5% contingency. Now, I know there are some questions about wanting to hold a 10% contingency. If that was the case, then you would have about 3.2 million left over from the previous budget plus 10 that we didn't account for, so about 13 million.
Somewhere in, in all the discussions, when you were looking at the, when Ashley was presenting the things that could be added back, there was some discussion at one point about a field house that we probably should add to that list for the board's consideration just to make sure we've covered everything that has been thrown out there.
I got a price on a field house, it was like...
Yeah, as it stands, oh, sorry. As it stands right now, you do have an athletic building with restrooms.
Yeah, I'm not, and please understand that I'm not advocating for any piece of it. I'm just simply saying I want to make sure that we have everything on there that our staff has asked for, for the board to consider.
Okay.
Are there different levels? Reason I was even bringing it up, I didn't know there was like different levels of field house, because it seemed like when we got presented last time was like platinum floors or something, I don't know. Well, we were told last time I had to meet like the DPI's criteria. You know, ours is pretty basic that we got now. I mean, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Just basic. The basic is where, you know, you can go or meet the DPI standard.
I think right now we have a spot for it, so that's something that we can go back in and evaluate and see, you know, what, what the needs are. Yeah, and what the basic requirements would be. I think a lot of that had to do with restroom count, right?
For the field house? I think the field house was just, there was, we, what we have shown now is literally the square footage of what we think you would need. I think that having more meetings on it, because we really kind of stopped the conversation, having more meetings on it would help MBCon price it more appropriately on what you really need.
Because there was a discussion about hygienic flooring and, I mean, it was...
Lots of tile.
Yeah, lots of tile. I mean, it got really, really expensive really quick for stuff that didn't sound like it would be needed, but DPI's done weirder things, I guess. Basically, what you showed on the first slide, the very, the site layout, all that stuff, we're sitting at 66 million, give or take, pedestrian. Everything else is on top of that for these add, add backs.
Can you go to the classroom piece? So additional classroom one and additional classroom two, they're 8,300 square feet each?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you were just looking at...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was just clear for me.
Mr. Lazar, since you're now the high school principal, you get all these questions.
Yeah.
What they were talking about with the pod being stuck on the end, is that that much more of a supervision issue in your eyes? Yeah, whereas number one is labeled, she said they were more concerned that that might create more of a supervision issue having it extended out that long.
I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal, I guess a little further involved, but it's not, I don't see it being like, it's not like it's way, way from the other classroom. I wouldn't think, I mean, obviously the little orange square there, I can't see.
Number two?
The number two, I mean, obviously the number two is more centrally located, so, but I don't think it's so far away that that would make that much of a big deal.
And I would say that if you're going to add one of them now and have one of them later, it's probably going to be easier to add two in, is that fair?
Yeah. And then have one be the future, future, as you said?
Yeah, because adding two later, I would think would kind of...
That would be kind of strange. What I'm looking at is down the road, we have to add one, is it going to create the same problem they're seeing that's created now? If we eventually have to do that, is it going to be...
So to, to piggyback on adding an additional classroom, that is kind of a, okay, additional classrooms, but if you bring in enough space for that many students, how does that include a science classroom, which requires some more specialized equipment?
So that is a great point and a great thing for us to add. If we do need to add additional science classroom, I would suggest that kind of roll into that CTE rearrangement just because it's in the same pod. So just hypothetically, like that number 15 that's adjacent to the green becomes your fourth science classroom, and then all of the rearrangement that happens kind of to the right would just happen with that, with that change. Or if you just chose to add another science classroom, we would just need to figure out where that space 15 went if you did not choose to re-look at that, that wing. Does that kind of make sense? I mean, we could obviously put science...
I mean, we could obviously put science with the number two or number one addition, but I think that kind of goes against some of the conversations we had where departments are together and so.
I mean, if you're gonna add that many classrooms, I think you're gonna need the science space as well.
Another thing to keep in mind when you're starting this, this is the front of the building. So you would prefer your construction to be, if you're doing construction in the future, plan for that off to the side or in the back, is typically what we like to do, not in the front, near your main entrance.
Instead of going into the front?
You mean, slide purple back kind of thing?
Yeah, split it right where the two freeways are, widen it that way and just expand the yellow wing. That way you'll get your, you'll get your science lab and classroom, whatever you want.
I mean, and so, um, again, that kind of goes to the, if you say, hey, we want more classrooms, that kind of conversation and getting into the details.
Yeah.
And having us kind of lay things out so you can react to them. You are doing a great job reacting to orange blocks on the screen, but when you start seeing where, oh, this is how many classrooms and this is how it lays out and here's five options, I think that's, but these are all great ideas that kind of.
Any doubt between anybody here and Sissy sitting over there that classrooms are gonna be the number one priority, gotta be. So I think focusing on where we would put that orange block is probably our first priority.
And, you know, we kind of made a decision that six felt like the right number. That's another thing that we would kind of look to you to say, is six the right number? You have, obviously, your core is for eight-hundred. So we have more room to obviously add a few more, so, you know. We, we would want that information from you if six is the right number, or we should go bigger, we should go littler, you know. Yeah, and that goes for all of these, as they get, these are just conceptual, obviously, they're orange blocks on the screen. But as we get into it and refine what exactly you want, we'll refine everything. Any more questions?
Yeah, let me go back to some of the specialized programs, I'm gonna say like band art. Their spaces, was their classroom based on eight-hundred core or kind of what the rest of the school layout was back? Is that some of the other spaces that we need to look at to say, they are, when we build them, they need to be ready for eight-hundred?
Right.
Whatever our.
That's a really good question. Uh, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I feel like they're sized appropriately, but we'll definitely look into that.
There's so much that's going on.
No, but I mean, it's a really good question because I, I, I don't know the answer.
So far, I think you're, you're heading down the right track. I like it that, I mean, I think the educational components of the school are top priority. Classrooms, your CTE expansion, looking at the other classroom space to make sure we have enough room. And then going down the bullet list to see what else we can add and still be a palatable budget. Anybody else have any other?
Have you looked at the overhead of the proposed Sawyer Track at all, just to kind of see how it looks conjunction?
Oh, we have. This is the adjacent property, yes, we have.
Is what I'm wondering is, is can we, obviously, we can save site development costs if it's much better land than we expect it to be. It should be good stuff over there. If we plan for, you know, sporting and parking to be on the garbage land because it doesn't require as much compaction and all that stuff, can we still save some site work money to help include more of the add backs, I guess, if I'm getting that? Or do we think the site work is pretty much where it is, plus we need to budget an extra one and a half million?
Generally speaking, even parking and site development is gonna require rework, even on poorer soil, you're gonna have to do a lot of rework to get the field. From my own experience on sites where they've had to do a lot of redevelopment just to get the drainage where you need it to be, to make those fields function properly, you're still gonna have to put a lot of investment in those. You know, we talked a little bit about, you know, where we place the school. I think there's opportunities, you know, when we look at the whole, a larger overall site, you know, how we wanna place things. And that'll be the effort that the whole team will look into, is all right, if it's now this new, larger site, where are the most economical ways to place everything? But I don't know that that's gonna necessarily create a windfall of savings, just, just because of what we have to do there.
And I think one thing to keep in mind, too, is these are estimates that we've done based off of drawings. We've reached out to subcontractors, we use information that we have from bids. Like I said, we bid a job three weeks ago. I mean, we know where the costs are coming in. However, if there are savings in the site, so let's say somehow we're able to find all of these savings, it goes back to you. We don't, we don't get that money, it goes back to you, so that budget. Yeah.
We thought that we could move some of that over to the bad land that doesn't need as much, maybe if it's, if, even if it's five-hundred thousand dollars, that's, that could be the difference between, you know, the classrooms and the oxgym or the auditorium or something. It may be that close that, you know, half a million's half a million, so.
There may be an opportunity, I'm not gonna speak too much to the team here. But, you know, as they get a chance to really lay the site out, and it's gonna take an effort of estimating and some light real design layout before we can tell them. So it's gonna be a number of months before we can really give you that kind of close. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to make some decisions here first.
Yeah.
Kind of move on those directions. And maybe you're gonna keep another one, you know, maybe you've decided two and the third one's on the, if we can afford it kind of category.
Right, and if.
Whether Ashley can keep that design in mind is what we have to work towards.
And if you're that close, if we're within five-hundred thousand dollars, I mean, it would be worthwhile putting it as an alternate. That way we can get a price, and if you can afford it, great, we get it. And if you can't, it's there, it's ready to go for whenever you do have the additional funding. I mean, we don't wanna have a bunch of alternates because that kind of bogs down the bidding process. But if you wanted to have an alternate or two, then I think that's, I think, I'm speaking for Ashley.
Oh, no, I would agree, yeah. You know, if we, if we know we're not gonna come close, then we'll have a conversation of that, that might be some wasted time spent, but if it's close, absolutely.
Any other questions before we go to the next steps? Okay, so for next steps, we're kind of back to where we were when we presented to the Joint Board of Commissioners and Board of Education. We need to know if the property is gonna be purchased so that we can actually start working on due diligence and get moving. We need to know what the budget is. Are we seventy-three, are we eighty-three, are we less? We don't, you know, we know that the money's there, we know that the commissioners agreed to thirty-three million, you have a fifty-million-dollar grant, but things can change, so we just need to know is, what the budget actually is going to be for the project. And then, once you have a budget, hopefully you'll be able to pick some of these scope items that you wanna add back. We'll go back and look at a fieldhouse and provide that information so that it's also on the list. Pick some of them so that we can kind of get moving on what that look, will look like laid out on the site. So that's, those are the three kind of big next steps that we have going. Any questions about these? All right, we're at the end, so I know we tried to get your questions throughout. Are there any kind of overall direction for us, next steps, questions that you would like for us to know?
So you, so tonight, you want to know a punch list of one, two, three, what to add to the site? Kind of holding up a lot, I understand.
We can't, we can't really change any design aspects until the due diligence is done, so I mean.
Yeah, that's why it's in that order.
Okay.
Kind of need to decide on the site, and you have to decide on a budget, otherwise you don't know how much you can add back. You, we don't know if we have space to add all this back at this point. And if some of them can be added, but not all of them can work. So you, those are the kind of the steps that you need to go through and then decide on the scope and then give us direction, or Ashley's direction, to continue moving forward with design.
What your number one priority is, if that is the case, but is that really, like definite, that's where you wanna go and what's your second priority?
Capacity is number one, in my opinion, yeah, that's a no-brainer. You know, it's got to be instructional space first and foremost. We're already really at six-hundred between the combined schools as it is.
Yeah, and we, but most definitely, yeah, we all agree on that, that we have to have additional classrooms added to the original, because it was already too tight. We don't need to open a school at max capacity, so. That's, that's, may as well just go ahead and consider that added in.
Budget-wise, I mean, you've got the wrong board in front of you right now because, I mean, the commissioners are the one who, I mean, even though the community has voted on the thirty-three-million-dollar bond referendum, they can choose whether to say, hey, we'll bar the thirty-three million, or we'll bar zero. That's, that's the truth of, of that.
They're gonna have to borrow some.
Yeah, dude, I, I just wanted to ask for clarification, do we all agree on that, that the added classroom space would include the CTE revisions that Ashley also presented?
Yeah, I'd, not, not right now, that's, that was three million more dollars, right?
So you're not gonna increase that instructional space as well?
I mean, I may, looking at everything else, but I don't, I don't wanna commit to that right now. And I, personally, me, I like additional classrooms first and an auditorium second. That's my, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
So I'm gonna take the stance on that you're gonna put auditorium above instructional space?
No, I want instructional space first, core instructional space, the additional classroom. They said that the additional CTE added no program, so.
It added no programming, but in the current plan, there's not a CTE space as big as any of the one of the CTE labs that we have now.
So the CTE wing in that whole school is smaller than what we already have?
What I'm saying, if you walk into the construction shop and the ag shop, those two spaces are bigger than any space that's in the CTE plant pod of Ashley's drawing.
And I think we need to discuss it before we just commit to it, but I think, I don't know any school in this area that doesn't have an auditorium except for us.
I'm sorry, what was that, Sissy?
I said I agree with you.
With Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, Sissy's just saying that she agrees with, uh, Ms. Ray.
Can you confirm that space analysis I gave Ashley?
I won't say that every space, but many of the spaces, yes, are less space than exists currently. Um, and we can give you some comparisons if that would help, just, you said, I mean, walking through a space is one thing, but looking at the numbers might kind of.
That's specific classrooms, but overall, there's more space, right?
I'm sorry.
Overall, there's more space.
Overall, there's more space?
In the, the CTE wing you presented.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know, that's just a, I don't know, I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head compared to existing.
It looks a lot bigger, but there's more room, I guess, too.
Yeah, I believe it's more rooms, I mean, some of the classrooms are rather small existing comparatively to what is some of the lab spaces. So it's, there might be some give and take of where things are bigger, where things are smaller.
That's what I'm saying, you could like, if, if you wanted to, you could shrink some classes to make the equivalencies that we have now. If we need a shop, a wood shop that's as big as we got now, you could give and take with what we're trading off what we have now. Because I believe overall square footage, there's more space there, this is how it's laid out.
We can, we can, when we provide the fieldhouse, we can try to provide more information comparison, just so you have what you need to be able to make a decision.
I'm not against expanding it, I just, I can't commit to that, it's where I would wanna put my number two at, right now.
Still feel, I feel like this conversation will be more fruitful after the due diligence period is done and we actually kind of know what we're working with, the layout that we're legitimately gonna work with.
And one thing to keep in mind, too, with timeline, is the longer that those things take, then we have to go back and revisit all of our numbers again.
But we can't change the design until the due diligence is done.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I kind of agree with. That's why the only thing I really wanted to even commit to tonight was additional classrooms, but that's just a no-brainer. The rest of it needs to be looked at, I think, more thoroughly once we have the due diligence and try to stick to a reasonable budget.
So it sounds like we're at a point of new classroom or additional classrooms, a comparison of CTE, adding a science classroom, and just make sure we're revisiting any other classrooms that are needing, expanding to meet the core and the fieldhouse. Is that what everybody's?
The, the size of the auditorium, that breakpoint was four-hundred, the four-hundred number capacity, like anything that's not five-hundred is four-hundred, that's the.
So those are kind of set numbers. When we get up to five-hundred, it, it's somewhere in the middle. Um, you can get to about four-fifty before you're not changing the stage size, kind of over that. And again, it kind of goes to design, too, and needs of what you're looking for. You know, rigging was mentioned, there are many different price points of rigging and what you're looking at. There are many different levels of kind of theater design in general. Um, so those are the conversations we would need to have. Can you go somewhere between four-hundred and six-hundred? Absolutely. Um, and that, those are just kind of the, those are DPI numbers of, hey, if you have this many students, this is how big your course should be. So this, therefore, we would recommend, and it's really just breaking down your student population and how many grades you can get in the auditorium.
May I ask a question? One of the things that, um, some staff has, has asked of me is if the board makes the decision to go with an auditorium, and I don't really know what rigging is, but I know.
It's the stage stuff that makes things.
Makes it all possible, okay, I got you. And so if it, so does that lend itself toward a theater program ever for Camden County schools or not?
Yes, it would, so, um, in many high schools, what we do is we actually put the theater program on the stage. And so then you're not actually adding a classroom space, that becomes their classroom space. Um, and then there's some ownership to that stage and therefore, you know, yes, if you ever added a dance program, then there would be some conversation of when they were having classes. But if you don't have a lot of competing, uh, programs, that theater program actually occurs on the stage.
Okay, that makes sense. So what about another question that has been asked along those same lines of me is choral music? So right now, we have a band program, but we don't have a choral music program and we don't have a theater program. But at some point down the road, the community might want to do that. So how would any of that, and this is my, my question for staff, I've not discussed this with the board, I'm just curious, how does that all tie in? Because we also don't have a place on the current floor plan for choral music.
So there are two ways to look at choral music. Obviously, it could be an additional program that we just anticipate and we create a space that it would occur later on if you didn't add it as part of this conversation, right, with the, the original build. Um, another way to look at it is band and chorus could actually occur in the same space. It would require additional storage, additional office space, additional practice spaces, but you wouldn't necessarily have to build two large spaces. The other way is to build a chorus room. So, um, that, those are kind of ways to look at it, you know. One is future, one is, yeah, shared and less billed, and then the third is obviously the larger billed.
And this is comments also on rigging, just extend rigging and also go to fly loft. Fly lofts are here, but, um, it depends on how high you go, but that's where, helping your theater program is, a lot of small theaters, auditoriums from F Y loft. You still have some level of rigging, it's just in that, you know, they can deal with it within the profile of the auditorium space itself.
And for bu, for budgeting purposes, since we're talking about it, we do not have a fly loft in this budget. Now, if you wanted to add that, that's, obviously, everything's negotiable and we can discuss it. negotiable and we can discuss it, we do have rigging needed for that size stage, like curtains, rigging for backdrops, we do have an AV system, a lighting system, and then obviously the theater seating is included, so all that's in there.
Thank you, that, that helps me to be able to go back to the couple of staff members who asked about that.
Fly loft.
Ship, right.
Yeah, and.
If we were to do the auditorium and use that multifunctionality of that with band and chorus, could we use the band space that we have there as additional CTE space? I mean, is that a possible?
Well, the band room is still, you're talking about being shared, if you use the band room as a chorus, or it doesn't, they don't move to the stage, I have seen it done, but you generally don't do that much.
Okay, theater is what he was saying with theater.
Now, if you chose to put the auditorium out to a different side possibly, and move, shift those programs, yes, that could be additional CTE space, anything is possible, but we also have gone really far down the road, so I don't, I want to encourage, but also be cautious on saying anything is possible.
But at the end of the day, the auditorium will add CTE instructional space as well, can be used to have.
But, yeah, the more you move the auditorium around and start looking at the programs around the dinner, I would say those budget numbers are not going to be accurate. The more they stay combined, and I've seen chorus and music room backing up to the theater as part of a complex, I mean, listening for a break, it's a lot of different ways to take them.
Any more questions? All right, as we move forward, we are happy to provide more information, we'll, we'll do what we kind of talked through here with the field house, verifying the core spaces, comparing CTE, and potentially looking at choral. If anything else comes up, obviously, just email Dr. Farrell, and he can email us, or you can email us directly, and if we need to participate in any conversations with the county, we're happy to present as we have in the past, we understand that it, it's two of you that are the owners, so we want to make sure that we're providing the information needed and helping make these decisions.
And another point is, I know the due diligence is something that has to happen and does kind of drive a lot of this, but this conversation helps us do a lot of legwork ahead of time, if we waited on due diligence and then had this conversation, we would still be dragging it out further, so don't think that this doesn't help kind of move it along, it gets some of this out of the way, so that we can provide you the info you need, so when due diligence is over, you can easily move into the next step of picking options.
That's what we're waiting on now, hopefully they can get far enough along with their due diligence, where we feel comfortable enough, we can start the design with both properties in mind, start laying that site, site out that way.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on the new high school project? Seeing honor, understanding a motion that we go in the closed session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Persett, if we go in the closed session. Seconded, seconded by Dr. Banks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, and we will not have any other, we'll not have any action outside of closed session this evening, thank you.
Okay, Sissy, I'm going to end.